Good afternoon, this is the Legislative Investigations Committee. This is actually our first hearing of the term in this committee, and it's an important one. We have two EAs to consider. I am Isaac Itzschleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Council President Cohn, and to his left is Councilman Gray. To my right is Council Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman Porter, and Councilwoman Glover, and Councilman Jones also. You're allowed to sit at one of the tables if you like. We'll give you a premium seat today. First up, we're going to hear is EA 25-002, John Laria, Chair of the Planning Commission. If you can come up to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission and your credentials, I would be happy to hear it.
Thank you. Go ahead. There we go. Okay?
I didn't think you needed instructions. You've spoken before.
Yeah, I need all the instructions I can get. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I want to thank the committee for its time and to the mayor for the opportunity to serve the city as Planning Commission Chair. I came to Baltimore from New York in 1981 to be a pre-med at Johns Hopkins, which lasted two and a half semesters, which I might point out is not three semesters, but only two and a half. And I stayed every summer during college and I never left. I've been very fortunate to have had a long career in Baltimore doing what I could to contribute to this community, both in my day job and in my extracurricular volunteer and civic work. I've chaired the Board of the Baltimore, a Safe Arts Space Task Force, the Mayor's Bicycle Advisory Commission, and the State Sustainable Growth Commission. I've been on the Healthy Neighborhoods Board for over a decade and the Central Maryland Transit Alliance Board for several years, and a National Rails the Trails Conservancy Council. As Governor Moore's appointee, I currently chair the Baltimore Regional Transit Commission, which is charged with advocacy and oversight for MTA, and I particularly want to thank the council and especially the council president for joining us in the CIP tour, which, as you and I discussed the other day, Mr. President, really has kicked off, I think, the funding for MTA and the governor's budget that is really making a big difference. I've also been fortunate, Mr. Chair, to serve on a number of important state and city task forces or commissions, including the mayor's ongoing work group on tax credits and previously on a task force for drug treatment access, a city tax policy task force, and a state economic development commission. Professionally, I've been at the law firm Ballard's Bar for about 30 years, including over a decade as managing partner, and my professional work as a lawyer has focused on the built environment, which necessarily means economic and community development, really attracting investment to the city and putting it to work here for our collective benefit. When I decided to step away from full-time practice a year ago, I assumed I would stay involved on boards and such and a limited way at the firm, but I didn't expect to have the opportunity to continue serving the city and to be able to do so in an area where I have a lot of practical experience on the Planning Commission. I would note a poignant full-circle moment for me, if you don't mind, because when I chaired the Sustainable Growth Commission during the Governor O'Malley administration, we rewrote the land use article to update the state's planning principles, which local jurisdictions are required to follow in their comprehensive plans. The city's just adopted, as you know, and the council passed the new comprehensive plan, and those principles, which I had a hand in writing however many years ago, are in the first few pages of the city's comp plan. So it was kind of a nice moment for me to see them this many years later. So I'm truly grateful to Mayor Scott for this opportunity, and if confirmed, I hope to continue to help the administration and the council grow the city, which I know is a goal that we all share and which will help address many other long-term issues like vacancy, public safety, and the overall budget picture. And if we do long-term comprehensive planning and land use planning and make good decisions on development, those decisions, those development projects that we create, that the city creates, that the city initiates, and also those that come to us from the marketplace, I'm confident that the city can and will grow. The commission has day-to-day responsibilities to fulfill, and I hope also a broader opportunity to help the mayor and the city council shape a long-term growth strategy for the city. So I'm deeply appreciative of the opportunity to be here and for the possibility of serving in this role. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. First up, Council President Cohn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Laria, for your willingness to serve in our city. Also, thank you for the work that you did in organizing for the roadshow when Mr. Weetafeld and MTA came to Baltimore. I think it was a really good showing for Baltimore. Folks came together, business community, city council, delegation, and showed that we're not going to be walked all over when it comes to priorities with the MTA. And I want to thank you for the organizing and the pre-work and the public testimony that you gave to set that up.
Thank you.
This is an all-in moment for Baltimore, where everyone needs to be rowing in the same direction. There is, there cannot be daylight between the mayor, the council, the business community, the building community. If we are going to grow our city, it is going to take everybody working together, not pointing fingers, but supporting each other. At times, we've been a city that gets stuck in silos, and so I am curious how you would work to make sure there is collaboration across government, for-profit, nonprofit, and organized labor as well, so that all parties are at the table to help grow our city.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Thanks for your kind words about the CIP. The Planning Commission is, in some respects, a crossroads. Lots of things come through it. Of course, it gets referrals from the council, legislation, and provides advice to you, which you do with, of course, as you see fit, and it also has independent responsibilities to do things like subdivisions and development plans and so on. So it does see a lot of different things going on, and, you know, generally they relate to the area of built environment and physical development, but as I said, that's sort of inseparable for me from the larger economic development enterprise and community development enterprise. I think my reputation historically has been as a consensus builder, someone who can run a meeting, which is not a bad skill to have in this environment, but someone who also can sort of look beyond the meeting and try and figure out how we can work together. I mean, my view is that the commission is in service of the mayor and the council, and that's the role I would hope to play. Hopefully, I have, and the commission has, and I know the members of the commission, I've watched several of them, I've been monitoring, if you will, sitting not at the table but off the table, watching. It's an excellent group of people with diverse skills, and I think those diverse skills are perhaps complemented by mine, maybe as a lawyer, maybe as someone who's done the things that I mentioned throughout my opening remarks. There'll be a way for me to sort of help bring people together around the priorities. I do hope and expect that your priorities will be made clear to the commission, whether it's the president's priorities or the council's priorities, certainly the mayor's priorities. And I want to be part of the team. The commission needs to be part of the team, and I think that's the role that I foresee. And I certainly agree with you about everything you said regarding the need to break down silos and so on. And I've been very, very gratified to watch, as this term has commenced, the hard work that you and the mayor and the comptroller have done to indicate that we're going to try and work together and we'll work together. As a citizen, leaving aside Planning Commission, that's very gratifying, and I'm very optimistic for where the city, sorry, where the city stands right now.
Thank you, Mr. Laria, and again, thank you for stepping up and being willing to serve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laria, so from your vantage point, what issues are there in the Planning Commission currently that you think that you'd like to see changed when you get in there?
Well, you know, I think I want to get in there first and see, and I certainly have watched the Planning Commission. I think the commission actually functions quite well. It has a strong professional staff. I do think that recruitment and retention at the Planning Department, which is an issue across the city, is important, and I know it's challenging to recruit professionals. So I see making sure that we can have an opportunity to hire and retain the best staff and, you know, to work on those issues together. The commission relies on our professional staff, and I've been very impressed in my practice and lately, as I've just been watching the commission anticipation of hopefully being confirmed, just to see how thoughtful it is and how hard it works to try and make these things happen. I do, Mr. Chair, have a couple of areas of interest that I'm hoping to pursue. They're not so much how things work, they're more like, here are some things I'd like us to be sure to look at, and if you'd like, I'll be happy to mention a few of them. One, I think when the code was revised and transformed Baltimore, we created transit-oriented development zones, anticipation of the Red Line. The Red Line, of course, has struggled, it was canceled, as everyone knows, during the prior governor's administration. We all hope that it's going to be back, and that's going to take a lot of work, there are lots of issues, but transit-oriented development, while the Red Line, they have been a spur for that, it's not exclusively related to the Red Line. I think the city needs to have a coherent and comprehensive transit-oriented development policy. There is work going on, as I'm sure you know, at Riceford Town Road Plaza. There are tremendous opportunities, and I think the commission could play a role in highlighting those and in syncing up. And I'm fortunate to have enough contact with what's going on at the state to know that the state DOT is very, very focused on transit-oriented development. It has a terrific office, it's well-staffed, and I'm very interested in facilitating a partnership between the city and the state. I think the commission is an appropriate role. Another area that I realized, sitting through the CIP presentations the other day, is the area of P3s, public-private partnerships, in an era of scarce resources. I think everybody's trying to figure out how to bring more resources to the table. It's very complicated, and the city has begun to do it. DGS talked about it a little bit in its CIP and some other agencies, I think, you know, potentially transportation, but certainly DGS. There are a couple of major projects going on that are potential candidates for some sort of public-private partnership, and I know that, for example, the city administrator, I think is here or was here, has been leading that charge. So there are, it is a ripe, is a fertile field for exploration. It has to be done very carefully before you embark upon that. I also think that the commission could play a sort of partner role with respect to the mayor's extraordinary vacancy initiative. Of course, known of, the council needs to know more about that, you already are fully briefed, but it is something that's going to go on for quite a while. I have tremendous optimism, the mayor's leadership, the state's partnership, the partnership of the Greater Baltimore Committee, the partnership of Build. So there are lots of questions to be addressed there, land use policy, financing, you know, all sorts of things, and I think it's off to a great start. The Housing Commissioner is doing an extraordinary job leading that for the city, but, you know, it's going to need, talk about, Mr. President, all hands on deck. I mean, the vacancy initiative is clearly an all-hands-on-deck initiative. So, you know, Mr. Chair, I don't, you know, those are a couple that I thought about this a little bit, and those are a few areas that I would hope to explore. Like I said, I don't want to be presumptuous. I know the territory, but I don't want to say that I know everything about, I don't know everything about, you know, what needs to be done there, and I look forward to engaging further with you. I hope to meet with council members about things that are going on in your districts, and, you know, I've got a learning curve. Hopefully, it's not as steep a learning curve perhaps as it might be for others, but it's no doubt a learning curve, and I'm very, I'm anxious to get on the learning curve. So I hope, is that responsive, and if not, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, and I couldn't agree more. I think that there is a good staff there. Give a shout-out to Eric in the back, who is always very professional on top of things, and also really to your predecessor, who's always been very responsive, Sean Davis, that you have, you know, big shoes to fill. He's always taken the time to explain the situation regardless of what the outcome is, and I'm fully confident that you'll be doing the same, but certainly that part of the process has been the least painful part that we've gone through. We've had some more challenges before items have gotten to the Planning Commission. So thank you for that thorough response.
Of course. Thank you.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Chair. Hey, John, how are you? I have a question, and basically it's super simple. How do you balance the need for economic development with ensuring community voices are heard and prioritized?
I actually, just if you don't mind my saying this, I actually wrote in my notes the following: "We need to strike a balance to create an environment that is receptive to growth but has policies, rules, process, and transparency that makes sure all voices are heard about overall planning and zoning as well as specific project approvals." So that's really the statement, which is the complement to the question you just asked. How do you do it? You do it by running meetings that are fair, that are open, that are transparent. I appreciate what the chair said about my predecessor, Sean Davis, who I happen to know and have appeared before, and he, I think, has done a very, very good job. The key, you know, inevitably, in a matter at the Planning Commission or the council or anywhere else, someone is going to be, likely, someone's going to leave with something they want, and other people may leave with, you know, with an adverse result. Hopefully, it's a win-win, but it's not always going to be. The key is to have a process in which people believe they've been heard, that it's a genuine listening, that you're not, you know, you're not doing it sort of as a pro forma exercise, and you just have to do that. You have to, you have to make it, you have to do it, you have to demonstrate that you're interested, and I think that's fundamentally the threshold thing that the commission can do. It's respectfully no different than the role that you sometimes play at your own hearings when you have, you know, competing views, but I just think it's so important to create an environment that really is receptive to growth, but that does not mean a, you know, a sort of unfettered green light for anything that anybody wants to do. Baltimore has a long tradition, and even if it didn't have a tradition, the right way to do it is to make sure that everybody is heard, the community associations are heard, that individual communities are heard, sometimes council members want to be heard, and that all has to be factored in, and then I guess you just use your, you know, the best judgment you can, guided in any cases by legal, you know, there is law, there are regulations that underlie all this, and they have to be followed as well. So it's an amalgam of all that, and I think you just put all that together and hope you come up with a result that is ideally a win-win for everybody, and if not, at least leaves people who didn't get exactly what they want and feeling like they got a fair, a fair hearing and a fair opportunity to make their views heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And another question I have: What are the biggest land use and zoning barriers to better integrating public transit with housing and businesses in Baltimore? And moreover, how would you address them?
Well, I don't, I mean, I actually think that the code is in pretty good shape. You know, we did a really good job when we modernized the, before 2017 or whatever year it was when TOD was added to the code, it was not in good shape. It was not really in a, it was not, it didn't create the opportunities for mixed use, relatively dense development around transit hubs, which is, of course, what TOD is all about, to maximize the value and to get density around transit hubs. I think the code's actually in pretty good shape, and it, but I just, first of all, the state did not have a willing partner, sorry, the city did not have a willing partner in the state for a very long time. When I was in, doing state work during the O'Malley administration, the state administration, we did the first work on TOD, we passed the first laws on TOD, and then TOD unfortunately took a bit of a vacation for eight years during the Hogan administration, I don't mind saying. The state is now back and ready to invest. There was TOD legislation last session, there's TOD legislation this session that hopefully is proceeding through the General Assembly. So I think the biggest thing is to have a willing, on that point, to have a willing partner and to engage, to fully engage, to make sure that the city and state work together for common goals. So that's just one, you know, one area. I mean, I think there's, you know, the, there is a bill that has been introduced by the administration to tidy up some things in the zoning code. That is a really welcome piece of legislation, because if, I think the gist of it is, we've been doing this for a couple of years now, at least, since the new code. I think there was maybe one cleanup before, but you learn lessons and then you sort of say, what have we seen a lot of that isn't really, that isn't really covered? And I know there are a couple examples of that, having looked briefly at that, at that bill, but the key is to keep that discussion alive, to listen to council members, to listen to constituents, and to then try and diagnose what they're concerned about as perhaps non-experts in what the zoning code says and interpret that into something that we can, we can address legislatively. And I think that's a dynamic process that has to keep going. You also probably know that in the new comprehensive plan, which the council passed, does now, will create a really novel, it's not novel in Maryland, it's novel in the city, which is an annual cycle where you'll be able to look at rezoning comprehensively and open the door to potential rezoning changes. So we'll probably all be seeing a lot more potential rezoning in furtherance of the land use plan that was adopted into the comprehensive plan, and I think that's going to be a rhythm that we're not totally accustomed to, because rezoning has really now, till now, has taken two flavors. It's taken the individual bills for individual projects, which, not to get too deep in the weeds, although I would love to talk about it, is, runs into some very arcane Maryland law on what, how hard or easy it is to do that and how it might withstand appeals and so on. The other is, every once in a while, we do a massive rewrite of the zoning code, which was gratifying for some and painful for everybody, but needed to be done. This, I think, this new idea of an annual cycle sits nicely in the middle of that. It's not, it's not a one-off, property by property, it's not a mega rethinking of the entire zoning code, but it's a rezoning of properties every year in a comprehensive way where folks can submit, council members can submit, constituents can submit, property owners can submit suggestions and subject to the, you know, the appropriate laws and evaluations, we'll be able to, the rezoning will hopefully keep up better than it has in the past, where the zoning got, in many cases, stale pretty quickly. I hope that's responsive.
That was great, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, John.
Vice Chair.
I guess I want to start by saying we, I've been knowing you since I started as a council member, and I just want to say first that, you know, you are extremely qualified to hold this position and run this board. And just listening to some of the previous questions and your answers, I'm, for example, we worked together on Transform Baltimore, and I've seen a lot of the work that you have done locally, just within neighborhoods and being a part of community associations, and I know that you have traveled throughout Baltimore, and I'm confident that you are familiar with every neighborhood, our impoverished neighborhoods and the struggles that they have. So I'm confident you will lead and do a good job, and I'm glad that you have mentioned that we are going, Baltimore is going through a transformation, there's going to be rezoning We have to think of ways to fill the vacancy, the housing problems. Some of the interests that I have, and I don't know if it's, you know, I guess if it's communication or just not enough involvement with the board, I've found this over the years in a number of boards that make decisions in our neighborhoods, and some of the people on those boards have never stepped foot in some of the neighborhoods that they're making decisions in. And I'm confident that you know just about every neighborhood in this city, and I'm hoping that your decisions will help weigh and maybe you'll do, if there's people on your board that have not been involved in every, just about every neighborhood, maybe that's one thing that needs to change. I just, I want you to really pay attention to some of the problems that might be state problems, and you are familiar and have expertise in that, and that's things like the abundance of variety stores that we have, like three or four in a neighborhood. One of my neighborhoods, Garrison and Liberty Heights, three or four variety stores there, and that prompted me to put in a bill that we are trying to revamp and will probably come back to the Planning Commission. Another state issue are all the abundance of group homes. I have streets where the, a whole block is like, those are things that prevent people from buying homes in neighborhoods like Forest Park, Ashburg, you know, a lot of northwest neighborhoods are really hurt by this, and I think our board commission needs to not pass the buck and really concentrate on some of those things. I'd just like you to comment on just what I mentioned.
Yeah, well, I mean, those are, you know, obviously issues in the communities you mentioned and in many others. I mentioned that when Lena Wen was the Health Commissioner, she asked me to serve on a task force on the issue of basically methadone clinics in neighborhoods, which was, you know, probably you would put in that category of uses that neighborhoods don't particularly favor. In that instance, of course, there are federal constitutional issues about them being a protected class, and I will say some of the issue was frankly that people had failed to explain the sometimes unpleasant truth to community members, that sometimes you don't have the complete freedom at the local level to legislate those things. So, you know, part of that was a communications issue. I don't know how much, I haven't been involved with it much since, I don't know whether, to what extent that's, you know, gotten better, but it's a fundamental conflict, and some of the other things you're talking about as well, maybe not, maybe not as intensely as the clinics, are sort of the same kinds of issues. So I think you have to figure out what's appropriate. I mean, obviously, you know, there are human beings involved on all sides of those issues, and they deserve, you know, deference and respect and courtesy, but I'm very sympathetic to communities who are trying to stabilize or build or improve, increase the value and the impact that those kinds of uses have. So it's a delicate balance. I certainly, if I had a solution, I would have suggested it by now, and then maybe the city, you know, and other folks could be, could be pursuing it. But I think just being mindful to that, and also, and goes back a little bit to the Councilman Gray's question, I think that trying to inform people about what the limitations might be, and when there aren't limitations, there are, but when there are, there are. And I think we have to be, we'd be clear in the way that we, you know, we communicate about those challenges. You know, we, there, we just have to, we just have to keep working on it together, Council, Councilwoman, sorry. Yeah. Sure, and you know, you're making, I don't, the commission is really an extraordinary group of people, and I'll be the freshman, you know, ironically, you show up there and they've been working together. I think the most recent appointee was at least a year ago, and I know them well enough to know that they know the city quite well, but you're making an interesting point about the possibility even of maybe doing some sort of a tour of particular, you know, I don't know how we would do that exactly, but on some sort of schedule, taking folks places maybe where people haven't been, and what I'll do is I'll poll the commission, and maybe we can identify some places like that where we say, you know what, it turns out that none of us have really ever been to, you know, a certain neighborhood or area, and we should get on a, on a, you know, bus or in our cars and go check it out and walk around, because there's no substitute for seeing it in person, which has been, you know, has been helpful. You know, I'm a bicyclist, and Councilman Dorsey isn't here, but I recommend, not to get into Director Macbeth's territory, but I did chair the city's, the mayor's Bicycle Advisory Commission. The city has a long way to go in that regard, I know it's complicated and all of those things about that, but I will say that seeing the city from a bicycle is very different from seeing it from a car. It gets you to all sorts of places you haven't been, and I have some regular rides that I do with friends and colleagues that go through very diverse neighborhoods of the city on a regular basis, and it's really a great, it's really been helpful for me, because in fact, on some of those rides, I've actually been able to identify things where I'll then have come back and said to someone in the city government, look, you know, this is not, maybe not my place, but I'm wondering, have you thought about this? Have you looked at this? And in some instances, it has hopefully led to, you know, sort of some attention. So, you know, getting out there, as you know, Councilwoman, getting out there and seeing it is, there's no substitute for it.
I think this council would be happy to set up some tour sessions and so on with people that are working in various communities, especially where there's major development, you know, right in Central Park Heights, 17 acres, there's going to be lots of rezoning, and I'm sure all of us will, we can think of a neighborhood that's going to go through a drastic change, be willing to work and set that up with you.
The lawyer in me, and I'm sure you've had the same issue, is how to do that and manage open meetings requirements, but we'll, I'm sure there's a way to figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We can ride bikes on this tour, so we'll be outdoors, and it won't be an official meeting.
I, you know, we'll have to look into the rules.
Yeah. Next up, Councilman Glover.
I guess we save the best for last. No, just joking. But, so we didn't, we never really had a chance to get to know each other, but, you know, listening to my colleagues, conversations with many of them, and they basically kind of echoed what you just mentioned, so, but I want to ask you a couple of questions myself, and those questions are like, in Eurovision, like, what would And those questions are like, in Eurovision, like what would be the best comprehensive master plan that you could think of when it comes to making sure that our urban community's voice is being heard in the process?
Well, you know, it, as I've said earlier to Councilman Gray, I mean, transparency and inclusion is really critically important because otherwise you just do things, people don't have any stake in them and often you do things and people say, why did you do that? If you just asked me, I would have told you it was a bad idea. So I think you, you have to, you have to find a way to include them. The comprehensive plan process, which is, the, the city's comprehensive plan is, I think it's about, it was just adopted by the Planning Commission and then by the council at the end of the last term. I think it's like 450 pages long with exhibits, to be fair. So it's a little shorter than that. But it's, it's an extraordinary document, which I think reflects input from all sorts of people about where the city might, might be able to go and how we might organize all of that. I, you know, I, I just think, again, it's a question of, of, of having a vision, of being willing to continue to take input in that vision, to tune it up. And we do have the right to amend the comprehensive plan during the, during the cycle if we choose to do it. I don't know if that's ever been done. So I think the comprehensive plan councilman is a good plan. There are, as you know, also, and I don't know every district well enough to say, but there are certainly neighborhood plans and area plans, there are impact investment areas, and all of those play a role as kind of, you know, subplans, more focused plans for different purposes. And, you know, we should be, we should all be looking at where those, where, where those might be useful because sometimes trying to plan in a, in a city as large as ours, you lose the forest for the, for the trees, if you will.
Okay, cool. But another thing is, and the reason why I say this is me growing up in East Baltimore my entire life, I've, I've heard the plans like back then, especially when they come around, like the area of the, of Hopkins, like EBDI area, things of that nature. We were promised so much. And here it is now, like 15 years, and we still haven't really seen any growth. Those families have been displaced, many have moved outside of the city due to any receiving vouchers and things of that nature. But how do we encourage and kind of bring those individuals back, those that want to come back to the city, those that, those treasures that have been around for so many years, we just feel like, you know, the way we're going about planning the city of Baltimore, I think a lot of our seniors don't feel like they're a part of the plan. A lot of them feel like they're being pushed out of their communities. And again, these are the treasures, you know, that pave the way for individuals such as myself that don't want to leave. So are we making sure that they're a part of the planning to keep those individuals, those seniors, those treasures in our neighborhood where they want to stay?
Yes, sir. Well, I think the planning department has, you know, that's a, that's part of what professional planners do is to engage the community. I think the Planning Commission has that role. The council members are never shy about weighing in and what they feel. One thing I would mention briefly is that, I mentioned that the mayor has a task force on tax credits. Councilman Bullock is the appointed representative, Councilwoman Ramos often comes, and I think others have come as well. And one of the things that we, that, that we've identified there is that among the various things we do, tax credits and so on, we actually don't do much to provide tax relief and incentivize, of all things, affordable housing, which seems odd. There's a lot of good work being done to incentivize market rate housing, commercial development and so on, all to address the city's very high tax rate, which everybody knows is a barrier and something that everybody is trying to address, the mayor, the council and others. But, and I'd be glad to talk about this at greater length whenever anybody wants, but one of the, one of the quirks is that we don't do very much to incentivize affordable housing. There are, of course, you know, governmental programs, low income housing tax credit for, you know, heavily income restricted projects and other financing sources that create that. But the city itself, particularly on the question of tax relief, where, you know, I, I know that developers of those projects are still struggling with the city's high property tax rate. We haven't sort of hit that squarely. There are ways that it gets done, and again, it's, you know, probably more than we have time for today, but it's, it's unnecessarily complicated. And one of the things that group has begun talking about is ways in which in a more, in a more straightforward way, we could incentivize the development and construction of affordable housing. And by affordable, I mean, that really runs the gamut from, you know, workforce housing all the way down to deeply subsidized housing for people who truly are of, of limited means. So that, that might be something worth considering. And, you know, how do you get people back? I mean, you have, it's persistence and telling a great story. And I think the mayor, the president, the council and others now are, that narrative is, is really growing. I think we have a great story to tell and we have to keep telling it loudly and to people who, who need to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilman Dorsey is not here today because he is sick and he sounds terrible. So I'm glad he made the choice not to attend, although these would be two of his favorite topics. And so I offered to ask questions on his behalf. And so I will read his question to you. And when you respond, if you can just talk into the camera behind me, because he's looking at you.
Councilman.
So Baltimore has consistently lost population over the last 80 years. You have served on the Live Baltimore Board. Baltimore reported in 2020 that Baltimore City has the potential to increase its population by at least 5,300 households every year, but we've continued to lose population every year since. That report cited lack of dwellings as a sole culprit in the failure to realize that growth potential. Can you talk about the changes you believe are necessary in order to realize that growth potential? And can you talk about, in the bigger picture, what you think are necessary goals for population growth? Because in order to realize that potential, we may need to bring 5,000 to 10,000 new dwelling units online each year, but last year we only brought 1,900 online and permitted only 1,000. And those numbers are down from each of the four preceding years.
Could you repeat that, Councilman? Seriously, it's an excellent question. And I know Councilman Dorsey in his new role has a sort of a very bold agenda in terms of, of land use policy. I know that he is, he has been talking with, with folks about ways to allow the development of multifamily housing and other housing units in areas that traditionally perhaps were only single family. That is a really important discussion to have. I'm still, I haven't talked with him about it lately, so I don't know exactly how that would roll out. And obviously it would have to go through, forget the Planning Commission, although it would, it would have to go through the city council and, and the mayors. And it, it's really a bold idea and I commend them for, for raising it. I, I think the, you know, we, some of it is, Councilman, Mr. Chair, is, is just dealing with some of the reputational issues that the city has had in the past, which I really do believe with the leadership of this council, with the leadership of this mayor, we are moving beyond, we're moving beyond. I think the pace is, is, is quickening and we're moving in a good direction. Just lately, there have been stories, these sort of buzz about the Baltimore Renaissance and we're, you know, moving into, into a, a sort of a new phase. So part of it is that, you, you, we have to deal with the property tax rate burden, which is a disincentive to investment by all sorts of people, whether it is commercial development, multifamily development, individual homeownership development. And, and, and I do think that the question of housing affordability, which is a national problem, as you all know, the president, prior president, has talked about the need for housing policy. Certainly the current governor, Governor Moore, has, has made it a, really a linchpin of his administration. And the city, the city is already and needs to continue to be part of that conversation because, because the, the, the real concern is, is trying to provide housing that is affordable. And it doesn't necessarily mean governmentally regulated or subsidized. It does mean that too, because we need it. And probably the only way to build housing for, for people of really low incomes is to have some sort of governmental assistance. But there's a bracket for sure of affordability that you can certainly achieve if you just relieve some of the, the cost burdens, the highest of which, or the worst of which would be the, the property tax rate. So working, I know everybody's working on that. I know the mayor has plans. I know you have plans. And I think there also are some specific things, Councilman Dorsey, that, that we can continue to do to, to, to address that for particular segments. And the one that, that strikes me most is, is affordable housing so that people can, can come here and enjoy everything that Baltimore has to offer. So that would be my response. And I look forward to further conversations with, with Councilman Dorsey, the Land Use Chair, about his very, very bold proposal, which I think is, is going to attract a lot of attention, good attention and good discussion about how we might be able to create. And I think the way he might describe it is some more density and by having more density, you have more vitality, you have more mixed use communities, all of which makes complete sense. We just have to make sure that we do it in a way that is deliberate and doesn't cause any unintended consequences.
Okay, thank you. And we have about $50 million right now sitting in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, collecting dust. So if you have any good ideas on that, I'm sure we'd be happy to hear that. Does anybody have any follow-up questions?
You have a question, Councilman Jones?
Go ahead.
Just one quick question. You, you spoke of the new process of a comprehensive rezoning and how along with comprehensive rezoning, a way to kind of encourage people to use it more is that the traditional way of zoning, going through council hearings, may be a little tougher or we want to use that not as frequently. Is there a plan to like educate the public on that process as well before the comprehensive rezoning comes around? Because there will be requests in hearings and, or requests and push from, you know, the city and the community on doing things traditionally the way it used to, to be done in order to, I guess, taper expectations. Just wanted to hear what the plan would be to educate the community on the new process so that people aren't bombarded and get disappointed.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Excellent question. I'm certainly committed to that and I will make sure that happens. But I can assure you, because I've had these conversations with the staff in anticipation of, of, you know, hopefully being confirmed and trying to educate myself about that process, they are designing a comprehensive plan for outreach so that people understand what will be a new, a new approach. But the thing I want to be clear about, and I think it's important particularly for council members to understand, is this is essentially in addition to, not in place of, the existing process. And it matters because no one is trying to deprive the council or individual council members of their ultimate land use authority. The zoning, zoning changes take place at the city council. Obviously the mayor has to, you know, sign off, et cetera, in the form of an ordinance. But this is really just to allow us to do it in a more comprehensive way. And again, and I'd be happy to talk about this and I'm sure the chair would kill me if I tried to do it today, to deal with some quirks in the Maryland law that make those rezonings, the, the traditional rezoning approach, which is council member introduces a bill and some, you know, goes through the process, et cetera, comes back. You will absolutely, and people will absolutely have the right to do that. This is simply to add a more nimble and probably legally smoother and more readily defensible process on top of that so that we can zone in a more coherent way. But, so that, I just wanted to say that for the record because I want people to understand that this is, this is an add-on, not a substitute. And, but your fundamental question, which of course is about notice and involvement, we're just going to have to find a way to do that. It will take some education and I, you know, we'll, I'm sure be calling on council members for their advice on how you think it should be done in your district. It's, it's just something we're all going to have to work through together and hopefully at some point, it'll just be the way it is, you know? But, but right now it's not and we're going to have to, we're going to have to get, work together to, to let people know about the, the potential different approach. Thank you.
We know in Baltimore, we've seen tension all over Baltimore, whether it's the butterfly or the L, the tension between large scale development projects and sometimes small scale but intrusive development projects and neighborhood concerns. I know you've kind of touched on it, but directly I wanted to ask, how would you approach situations where community opposition conflicts with citywide development goals?
Well, you know, that's sort of the big question for all of us, including respectfully the, the council. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, land use authority is the councils, the councils and the mayors. It's not the planning commissions. We're simply there to implement. We do approve, subject to the laws that you, that you create. But that's, you know, that's the, the big, the big question. And I guess all you can do is, you know, my, my attitude is, we should be inviting of investment, including large scale investment. We should be a place where people want to come, but they should also understand that we take the process seriously. It's an open process, it's a transparent process and it engages the community. And sometimes that is going to lead to outcomes that are not green lighting those projects. Sometimes they won't happen at all. Oftentimes, almost every time, they change in some way in, in response to community engagement, councilmatic engagement. And that's frankly just the way the process is supposed to work. And I suppose the Planning Commission and maybe the chair in particular, but at least the whole commission is kind of in the middle of that, trying to figure out how to strike that balance. And all I can say is, having never had to do it, but having been around it, you, you gather as much information as you can, you look at if there are applicable laws, anything that's an objective, you know, requirement or, or prohibition. And then when you get down to some judgment things, you use your best judgment and try and, and figure out how to, how to, how to do the best to accommodate. I have seen many, many win-wins, things that started out as opposition that, that turn out to be win-wins and probably more of those than situations where people are, one side's happy and one side's angry. And that would be sort of our, our aspiration, right? That's what we're trying to get to. But I don't think, I just don't think that, that development, even large scale development is incompatible. Sometimes it's just a question, oftentimes it's a question of communication and of, of gaining trust. And Councilman, if you don't mind, I'll just refer to the Edmondson Village project, which you, you worked on and you continue to work on, which I was privileged to work on. That project, it was so hard to get that, the project going in the first instance because over decades, there was an absence of trust between the community members and sort of everybody else, the developers, even the city. And when the city went in in the first instance and said, we want to do this, the community said, we don't trust you, we've been, we've been taken advantage of, et cetera. Everybody, you, your predecessor, the mayor himself, delegates, the list is long, as you know, went around, earned that project, the ability to proceed. And now, as you know, there are some additional changes that are needed. And it is so gratifying to see that those same people who were concerned the first time said, you did, you, we gave you some, some, some privilege, some entitlements. You have done what you said you were going to do. I think everybody knows the tendencies that are opening there, supermarket and retail and so on. And, and, and we trust you now. I mean, it's a perfect microcosm, isn't it, of the ability to, 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 to work to develop trust? And sometimes council members, sometimes other, other public officials can be in the middle there to help that trust. It means holding the, the developers' feet to the fire, perfectly fine, nothing wrong with that. But it also means figuring out how to, how to get a good deal for the community and also help counsel the community about, you know, what's feasible and how, and how we can, we, you know, how you find as much of that win-win as you possibly can. You just, you know, that's part of the, it's part of the job, Councilman. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. We, I called your hearing first because I thought it was going to be quick and then we'd move on to the other one, but I was mistaken, so I apologize.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I think I was just trying to answer your questions.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not blaming you. I appreciate your thorough responses. So I will make a motion to, to approve EA 25-002, John Laria, to chair the Planning Commission. Oh, I just moved it, so, do you want to second it? All right. Moved by Schleifer, seconded by Glover.
Ready for a roll call? Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Vice Chair Glover.
Yes.
Vice Chair Glover votes aye. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes, votes aye. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Gray votes aye. Mr. Dorsey is absent. Mr. Chair, there are four votes and the affirmative, no negatives. This can go to second read on Monday.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Laria, for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys want a break first or do you want to jump right into it? It's up to you. Okay. Next up, EA 25-001, Veronica Macbeth, Director, the Department of Transportation. Mr. Macbeth, if you can first start off by introducing members of your team who are here with you today and then same instructions, if you can introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve as the Director of the Department of Transportation. And you got to hit the right button. There you go.
Gotcha. Sure, I'll introduce my team members that are here with me today. I'll start in the front. I have my CAO, Viovia Akilo. In the back, I have Luciano, who works for us as a policy analyst. I have Stu. for us as a policy analyst. I have Stu Sirota, who is our planning chief. I have Tavon Braxton, who is also one of our deputy chiefs. Does anyone else? Oh, okay. I think that's it.
Well, thank you for keeping that light. Some directors' hearings, they marched the entire team to fill up all the seats. And then I just spent the entire hearing trying to calculate how much billable hours is sitting in front of us. So thank you for keeping that light this evening.
Sure. May I? Good afternoon, Chair Schleifer, President Cohen, Vice Chair Middleton, and members of the committee. My name is Veronica Perry Macbeth. I'm honored to be considered for this position of the Director of Baltimore City DOT. I want to begin to thank Mayor Brandon Scott for this opportunity, and to have the opportunity to serve this city that I love so much. And just to note that it would be a great opportunity to serve in an agency where I have really cut my teeth. So it's kind of a full-circle moment to get the opportunity to come back eight years after I did in fact work for Baltimore City in the Department of Transportation. I'd like to share that I'm a neighbor, a retired community association president, and also frequent user of 3-1-1. Want to thank my children, who are not here but watching me on Charm TV, my daughter, who's a senior here at Western, and my son, who's a freshman at Mervo, and just really grateful for them, for them to continue to share me with the citizens of both the United States and now the residents of Baltimore, as I worked for US DOT earlier this year, in the last three years, and now Baltimore City. So again, I'd be remiss to not thank you all for your time again. So I just want to give you a little bit about my background, and my comprehensive transportation experience that spans over 20 years, of federal, state, local government, and also a stint in the private sector. So bear with me. Just going to start recently, as my experience at the federal level, I was last serving as a Deputy Assistant Secretary for Transportation Policy, who was appointed by President Biden during the Biden-Harris administration, and I served directly under Secretary Pete Buttigieg. And during my time as Deputy Assistant Secretary, I took part in leading the historic implementation of the bipartisan infrastructure law. My portfolio included overseeing major federal grant programs that were worth billions of dollars in infrastructure investments, some of them including RACE, which was rebuilding American infrastructure for sustainability and equity, Rural, which helped with rural transportation, Surface Grant Program, MEGA, the Infra Program, and I also directed the Justice 40 and Environmental Justice Equity Initiatives for the CEQ, which is the Council of Environmental Quality, and also the Office of Management and Budget for US DOT. Additionally, during my time at US DOT, I managed important cross-agency efforts for agencies within US DOT, including my portfolio that included FTA, which is the Federal Transit Administration, MARAD, which is the Maritime Administration, PEMZA, which is Pipelines and Hazardous Materials, GLS, which is the Great Lawrence Seaways, the Federal Highway Administration, and the Federal Railroad Administration. So again, I also did a stint as a detailee in the US DOT's Office of the Departmental Civil Rights Office. And as my time there, I started off as a Senior Advisor for the FTA Administrator, and I managed a lot of the administration portfolio within that agency as well. I'll delve back into local government, I'll spare you my state experience, but I did work at MDOT, and I managed the Minority Business Enterprise Office, where I oversaw a lot of the legislative proposals that came through, and I was part of the team that helped the MBE program increase the minority business percentages that were due to minority and small businesses in the state of Maryland. I then subsequently moved to work at MTA, and also managed the Legislative Affairs Office there for four years, and single-handedly oversaw the review of the MAP-21 review, which is the overhaul of the budgetary and financial changes for the transportation laws. Secondly, I was talking about local experience. I was the Transit Bureau Chief for Baltimore City DOT for four years, and during my time there, I managed a $20 million annual budget for both capital and operations. I successfully implemented the first iteration of the Baltimore Bike Share System. I led the installation of 20 miles of bike infrastructure in just under 20, sorry, in just under four years. And during my tenure, I helped the city achieve the bicycle-friendly bronze status for the first time ever. And just lastly, in my private sector career, I worked as a consultant at a local firm that had national presence, and I was able to secure approximately $4.5 million for various jurisdictions for consulting contracts. And I did work in Baltimore, Boston, Atlanta, DC, and San Antonio, so across the country. Going to jump into my divisional goals, if that's okay, to just talk about how I'd like to help move things along in the various divisions at BCDOT. So if confirmed, I'm committed to implementing comprehensive organizational changes across the agency that will transform how our agency operates, and provide visible and viable service-level improvements. And I'd just like to share a few of those key goals. So I'd like to start with our traffic division. I'd be, my interest is in modernizing signal operations and maintenance, implementing real-time monitoring systems, enhancing response times to signal outages, improving coordination with utilities and contractors, improving our maintenance of traffic operations, and under that, adding staff redundancy to prevent service gaps, including, we all know that we're going through kind of a massive retirement span in the next 10 years, just across the United States, and that doesn't negate us from having that same issue here in Baltimore. And additionally, updating traffic study methodologies. As it relates to our safety division, I look forward to establishing some data-driven safety protocols, creating rapid response teams for high-priority safety concerns, implementing Vision Zero strategies, developing comprehensive safety metrics, and creating a modification to how we receive and respond to 3-1-1 requests. As in response to our tech team, which is also known as Transportation Engineering and Construction, my goals for our long-term capital planning program include streamlining our project delivery, modernizing our design standards, improving contract, over contractor oversight, enhancing quality control processes, and recapturing federal funding drawdowns in a timely fashion. As it relates to our planning division, I'd like to reimagine the project delivery pipeline to improve outcomes with a focus on equity, sustainability, safety, and accessibility, prevent waste by prioritizing good projects that advance our transportation goals in cost-effective ways, and future-proof our agency by laying out long-term plans, allowing us to be proactive instead of reactive. Finally, focusing on the administration, administration component, I'd like to also focus on updating permitting processes in our right-of-way division, improving customer service functions across the agency, streamlining the special events digital process, and improving customer experience across the board. And lastly, modernizing record-keeping and enhancing our internal communications processes. So overall, each division will operate under clear metrics, with regular performance reviews and accountability measures. Standard operating procedures will also be a very critical measure to help capture knowledge and have perpetuity within the agency. Additionally, ensuring that we have a plan for retaining historical knowledge and agency practices to ensure comprehensive succession planning takes place. And it's critical, in my opinion, that agency-wide information sharing is available for both internal use and available for both Merrill and City Council access. And so I want to be realistic with you. The challenges we face are significant. And as my mentor once said, "How do you eat an elephant?" One bite at a time. So we'll move deliberately, but consistently, and focusing on sustainable improvements rather than quick fixes. We will focus on the significant backlog in our traffic calming requests, concerns about parking enforcement effectiveness, the need to improve our bicycle network, challenges in our relationships with the utilities like BG&E, issues with our permitting systems, and consistently growing funding opportunities based on revenue as well as grants, i.e. looking at state, federal, and private funding sources. So we will make a push to increase in-house and full-time staff capacity while decreasing our reliance on contractual services that oftentimes cost significantly higher cost amounts than our other city counterparts. We will implement a robust community engagement strategy that includes standardized SOPs for consistent outreach and successful outcomes for engagement efforts, regular structured meetings with elected officials and community leaders, transparent project tracking and regular progress updates, clear metrics for measuring community engagement effectiveness, integration for complete streets, principles, and all projects, public dashboards showing project timelines and milestones, and early and continuous community involvement in project planning. And most importantly, we will invest in our people. BCDOT's strength lies in its staff, and will create clear paths for training, advancement, and growth through compiling comprehensive training programs to ensure safety, creating clear pathways for advancement for internal staff, fostering professional development opportunities, cultivating growth for existing staff, promoting from within, and building a culture of excellence and accountability. However, I do want to believe, I do believe in managing expectations through transparency. The concerns are vast and the needs are great. Under my leadership, we will move with intention, urgency, and a focus on consistency. I will do my level best to ensure every step forward will be deliberate, measured, and sustainable. Innovation and relationship building will be central to our success. We will leverage cutting-edge technology and smart infrastructure to address persistent traffic management issues, reduce congestion through the implementation of connected traffic signals, take decisive actions by dynamically addressing changing road conditions, and research and implement industry-best practices. We will also prioritize and maintain strong partnerships with utility companies and contractors, our state and federal agency partners, community organizations, academic institutions, and private sector partners. And we will position BCDOT as an industry leader through implementation of innovative solutions to inherited challenges, investment in emerging technologies, development of data-driven decision-making tools, creation of sustainable, forward-thinking processes, and adoption of best practices from successful transportation departments that we've sought out nationwide. So in closing, and I know this is long, but I have my moment, right? My extensive experience in transportation policy, grant management, and project implementation at, at the federal, state, and local levels uniquely position me to lead BCDOT through these challenges. I commit to being accessible and transparent with this committee, as well as all stakeholders, as we work to advance Baltimore's transportation infrastructure. Together, through strong relationships, innovative thinking, and unwavering commitment to excellence, we can transform DOT into model transportation agency that effectively serves all of Baltimore's residents. And I believe we can build a transportation system that works for everyone, safer, more efficient, and truly equitable. And I look forward to working with each of you to make that vision a reality. And thank you. I'm happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you very much, Councilman President Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, interim Director Macbeth, for your willingness to serve the city of Baltimore. You are eminently qualified. You have private sector, city government, and federal experience in transportation. And I want to personally thank you for the work you did while at the federal government to secure support for removing the highway to nowhere here in Baltimore. That is a critically important project. That highway to nowhere was a massive blight on our communities here in the city. And just want to lift up that I know you were part of the federal effort, along with our great delegation, to secure funding, to begin to heal that scar on our city. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You are seeking to take over a challenged agency, as you noted in your remarks. And I'm going to lift up just one project that's on my mind. You and I have spoken about it. It's the Greenway Trail. While other cities have made significant strides in building trail networks, I, I look at Pittsburgh, I look at Detroit, I look at certainly New York and Washington, DC, Baltimore has struggled. And a project that had an enormous amount of hope and federal and state support has really floundered. Recently, we had to return $1.5 million to the state of Maryland that was secured by our legislators for purchasing a spur, the Norfolk Southern Spur, because we did not use that money. And I was told by folks in the know that DOT was aware that that funding was in jeopardy and did not act in time. This is one of many examples of where I've seen this agency be challenged to take action and make forward motion. And I think there are profound operational challenges within the agency. I am curious, from an operations standpoint, how you would prioritize moving projects forward, how you would communicate out to the community in an effective way, and how you would make sure your engineers and your staff are empowered to move forward? Because I think there has been both just a lot of muddle on day-to-day basic safety improvements, street safety improvements, and then on big and important projects for the city of Baltimore, there has been a lack of forward progress. And so I want to know how you would tackle those issues directly.
Absolutely. So you covered a lot of my additional talking points, so I'll just kind of hit several of the things you mentioned. So I'll start with the infrastructure improvement component, and I'm going to back up a little bit to the grant-making component, because you mentioned it upfront. It was a unique and distinguished opportunity to be a part of the other side of grant-making. I've been on the side of applying for grants, which is arduous and heartbreaking, and also exciting. To be on the side of grant review and awarding and making tough arguments as to why someone deserves something and others don't is rewarding and equally heartbreaking as well. That being said, I saw grant opportunities come from the city of Baltimore, and I saw a lot that I thought should be coming from the city of Baltimore that I never saw. So, and that was one of the frank things that I did get an opportunity to have a very brief but early conversation with my staff about, is that I think we have some missed opportunities, but not gone opportunities, right? So this is about making adjustments, and kind of pulling ourselves up by the bootstraps, and taking some opportunities that we didn't utilize and fixing them, right? So as it relates to the Greenway Trail, I know that there was a loss of funding, and I was familiar with it, just obviously being a resident, you know, I always kind of have my nose in the middle of things, even though I wasn't actually working for the city. And I would say, as far as like the infrastructure and project completion components, I think it's really critical for us to better track projects from the cradle to the grave, right? I think there's an inundation of projects that are happening within the agency that sometimes get lost in, in the mix. It's not an excuse, but I think that's what has happened. You know, you have a million balls in the air and not enough people trying to catch them. And so that's one of the things that I would, I would like to make adjustments with, taking a look at prioritizing the feasibility of projects and the cost-effectiveness of doing projects, right? If we can handle it ourselves, if we need to utilize the help of consultants, or the expansiveness of how we can manage the work, even utilizing or having assistance from a sister agency, like the Office of Planning, who's just upstairs from us. Additionally, taking a look at how we would be completing ongoing design efforts and preparing for construction alongside some of those efforts, and just trying to fill in the gaps of project coverage. And that was one of the things that happened. And that was one of the things that happened in this particular area, we were not able to fill in the gap of having that project coverage. Another note that you mentioned were, was about, I would say, the improvement components, right? As far as like the infrastructural improvements associated with it, I would mention that we've had a lot of trouble prioritizing our capital funding because we're often asked to do so much more with less every single year. Can you do more? Can you do more? But there's not enough money to always do more with less. So I think it's also about us having, in part, managing expectations, but two, trying to figure out how do we also become a revenue-generating agency as well, in addition to having to be asked to do more with less? So I think that is also some level of congruency as to why there have been challenges with project completion. You mentioned additionally about community engagement components associated with these, and I think that has also been an ongoing challenge. I would mention, I oversaw community liaisons when I was at the city in the last time I was there, and I was able to write some standard operating procedures for the liaison so that every entity that they met with was getting the same version of every other meeting that was happening. And I think that's one of the critical things that needs to happen again. So I think it goes without saying that liaisons and community engagement needs to start before the project even happens, right? So you know something is going to happen, but you're invested, you're out in the communities, and you have an opportunity to tell a story, like, hey, not just what we're going to do, but what do you need? What are you looking for? And these are the things that are potential projects in the area. So it's about improving the relationships with community organizations, the council officers, and then additionally stakeholder groups, and ensuring that there are standards and internal standards as well, because there is also a gap in information sharing between, you know, what's happening upstairs to what's happening downstairs. So recognizing challenges, but also providing a promise that we will absolutely do better and make sure that our internal communications will match and exceed our external communications.
No, I appreciate that. And like I said, I think that you have an incredible amalgamation of different experiences that lead you to this moment in our city, which is a moment to the previous nominee's point of growth for Baltimore. But we will not grow if we do not have safe, multimodal transit options. I don't see a city on the east or west coast that is meaningfully growing in population that has just such a hodgepodge and mishmash of unsafe streets. And I think that there has just been a lack of aggressiveness in Baltimore about being pro-transit, being pro-growth. And so I am really hoping that's an area that you will see improvement. And I know you did manage the liaisons, I would say that has been really lacking in these last couple of years. I think when we have liaisons, we need to make sure that they have a clear mission and they know what their deliverables are, and that they are able to deliver a message and be consistent, because otherwise it feels like a waste of talent to have those folks. And I think they've been deeply underutilized. I'm going to cede back to the chair, but again, I'm grateful that you're willing to serve in this capacity, and I do think this is the moment to really dig in and fix what has been broken within this agency. Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Macbeth.
Thank you. And to echo the President's sentiments, thank you, Ms. Macbeth, for your willingness to serve. I enjoyed our meeting together and discussing a lot of these issues. And as I expressed to you, I feel that DOT is probably, at this point, one of the most broken, if not the most broken, agency in the city. You know, it's got a very large budget, and I've never heard anybody really feel that they're getting what they're paying for. And for me, that's a big thing. We have extremely high taxes, and so our constituents deserve to get something for that tax money that they're paying. And so I just want to start at a couple of things. The first thing I want to just get into is the overtime. The overtime has doubled in the past four years at DOT. Now, I understand there's certain functions that, you know, overtime is inevitable, special events and certain functions like that. But in looking through the list, one employee had just under 3,000 hours of overtime last year. Their overtime payout was $130,000. Combined with that salary made him more money than the mayor got paid. And so obviously, it's very troubling. I don't know this individual. I'm willing to bet they don't work as hard as the mayor, so why they're getting paid that much, I don't know. But 3,000 hours of overtime does not sound safe, sustainable, or really anything, because that means we're assuming they're working 5,000 hours a year. That doesn't, it's something, something's not right. And then looking through the list, there's a lot of people who are, who have excessive overtime, especially in departments that, that really doesn't make much sense. Another 40% of that is in street management. I gave you an example that I witnessed firsthand when I walked out of my house one Saturday morning, and there was an inspector inspecting the repaving of my street, which had occurred, I believe, seven years ago. But they came this past year to inspect the work that was done seven years ago. I asked why they were out there, and they shared that they were getting overtime to go through the backlog and inspect, not that there's really anything to inspect at that point. And so, you know, and then I see, you know, 20% of the overtime is on parking enforcement. And we're all aware of recent reports about the performance there and the money coming through from parking enforcement. It boggles the mind how we're losing money on that. I mean, that's the first thing people say when they get a ticket, is you're just doing this to make money. And I don't know any other jurisdiction that loses money on parking enforcement, that just sounds, that sounds crazy. And so when I see excessive overtime there as well, it just begs the question, what exactly are we getting for all this extra money we're paying for? So what do you plan to do as a director, both short-term, like immediately, but also long-term, to rein in this excessive overtime and to, and to address this?
I think those are excellent points you've made. When we did have our meeting, both our intro meeting and then you met with us at our office, and we had our pointed conversation about overtime, we had a couple subsequent internal meetings about overtime, and we are internally planning to begin doing an overtime audit. I despise government waste. I feel like that's an understatement. And so as somebody who's been a lifelong government employee, and I think government employees often get a bad time, I mean, a bad rap about them misusing their time, and as somebody who feels like there's not nearly enough time in the day to do the work that I do, I know how many good and great people there are out there, and I would hate for them to have a bad reputation by the people who are marring their name by not doing the work that they're supposed to do. So my colleagues and team, we plan on taking a look, working with our HR office and the various divisions where we are seeing some faltering as far as staff that are receiving excessive amount of overtime. One, taking a look at, obviously, the hours, the various positions that are having the excessive hours. And I think also, one of the critical things that I think it's really important for us to do is have checks and balances, right? I think that's one of the things I see could be lacking, right? That if there is no check or balance, you provided a great example that someone was outside of your home inspecting a street that might have been paved six or seven years prior, well, there was clearly no one check or balance for somebody to be sent out to your neighborhood to say, okay, we're inspecting this street that was recently paved in the last six months to one year, right? There is a backlog on checking things like that. But six months to a year, reasonable, six to seven years, ridiculous. So taking a look and responding and providing caveats as to looking at the work that you're going to be assigned to do, and then subsequently having somebody sign off before you are even allowed to do the overtime, and then signing off on the overtime that you have done and providing, reporting back on the work that you have done, you know? Because I feel like, yes, we need the work done, but it's also a privilege to be paid this extra money to actually do that work. And then as far as traffic enforcement, or parking enforcement, pardon me, is what you were saying, we're in the process of doing an overhaul, coming in and inheriting some changes that we're working on. Some of those things would include moving our services to 24 hours, so that would help include our revenue generation as far as being able to blitz and pinpoint areas that have, I would say, repeat violators. We know specific areas where we see people that are impeding residential parking areas and residential parking permits, areas where people are regularly violating long-term metered areas, like you're looking at places like, you know, Federal Hill, Fels Point, places like that where they have later meters, and people are just actively parking in those areas and not feeding the meters, but perhaps like we're not able to be out later into the evening to continue to take it and things like that. So we have opportunities to move forward with that, also taking it a step further. We will have opportunities to go actually more into communities and residential areas during these times, taking a look at cars that may have expired tags or be dumped in neighborhoods, and taking a look and being able to better expedite and move through the process of, one, citing the cars and also marking them for them to be towed, one, if they've been dumped, towed immediately, and two, if they have expired tags, begin starting the process for the towing. So again, revenue draws and trying to increase the ability to have people follow the rules of the road.
So is there any, like, now that you're starting this audit, is there any, like, any like immediate step that you're taking as far as, you know, extra checks and balances and divisions that simply don't need to have overtime for public safety purposes or for priority-one purposes? So like, you know, that inspection division or some of the other avenues, is there anything that you've, you're putting into place where their supervisors have to check with you? Because I mean, ultimately, you're going to come before the Budget Committee. We are going to discuss this, we discuss this with pretty much every agency.
Right.
And so you're going to have to answer for the decisions that, that these managers are making. And so is there anything you're going to do, like, immediately to stop that, you know, that spending right away, especially in those divisions, so that you can answer for the overtime that does get spent from this point forward?
My goal is to say, yes, we're going to do that. I am four weeks in, so I mean, still actively trying to grasp the timing on that, but I know we are, we have pulled the data, as you know, because we've talked to you about it, started looking at the hours, the dollar amounts that have been being spent on the overtime. It is a priority. My goal is to make some steps towards putting checks and balances in place for staff to not be getting overtime that is not actively being used in a proactive way. I don't want to say like on this day at this time, but I will say that it's a priority to move on this, and I'm happy to report back to you once we have a few more meetings under our belt, preferably in like the next two weeks, to see where we land as far as being able to put something more on paper and see how we can take these next steps.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I first want to say, it's really, just sitting here, watching you answer all these questions and going through your resume, it's really a breath of fresh air. Personally experiencing your journey from the beginning, I remember when you first started at transportation and you worked, I think you were kind of like a liaison, maybe in the 6th District. You were so involved, it felt like that. And because you were, I guess, involved in the new bike infrastructure and so on, I want to let the council know that Roland Avenue was one of the first pilots, they volunteered to be a pilot for the city with bike lanes. And Veronica was kind of right on it, but I knew that she was the kind of person that just learned, had a caring instinct, and just was willing to learn everything. And lo and behold, she did leave us. And it was really, you know, people were very upset at the time when she decided to move on to get more knowledge and information. So I've actually watched her journey and transformation and getting that experience on all levels is just so important to a very difficult job, especially male-dominated job. I serve as Vice Chair of NACO's Transportation Committee, and I know very well of how male-dominating it is, and to just watch how she can just, she stays on task of what the issues are. And I know that you've probably collected best practices around the country, just because of your experience on the federal side, and hopefully bringing them back to Baltimore. And then also, living in this community and had the opportunity of you serving as the president of a neighborhood. So when she mentioned 3-1-1 and experiencing that and knowing that that's, she's actually been through all of that, so she knows the problems, not just with, that's going on with transportation, but just around the city and probably in other agencies. I guess the thing that really, I'm hoping, and I have confidence that you're going to do that, is the communication piece and education piece with our neighborhoods and giving our neighborhoods a chance to express themselves. And I know you probably have gathered some best practices on how to do some of that. I just, that's the only question I have for you, because I know that's the, that is going to be the centerpiece and the key to bring everything that you're responsible for in the Department of Transportation. If you could just maybe share a few of the best practices that you are definitely going to add for our city.
Right. Thank you, Vice President Middleton. So I would say that, yes, I've had the opportunity and been very fortunate to get to travel the country over the last three years to experience various states, local governments, where they have instituted some amazing best practices as far as the engagement component. Again, as I said, like the cradle to the grave of the project, before the project has really gotten started, all the way to the end of the project, and even through when the project has been completed, still ensuring that the community is having like the best user experience. Also, I know I saw some of my colleagues from both MDOT and MTA here, definitely plan on using our sister agencies to partner with them and making sure that our engagement components are intact. And I would say that in the aspect that we will have a lot of engagement efforts for the cross-section of doing work with MTA with several of the projects that are happening in the city that overlap with things like Amtrak and additionally like the Francis Scott Key Bridge. So I have had a great experience as far as like working and finding best practices throughout the country, but also other organizations, organizations like NACTO, which is an organization that is utilizing and has member agencies from all over various cities that provide best transit and transportation. best transit and transportation practices, that will, is a nationally recognized organization that you would utilize. They just put out an update to their best practices as far as transportation issues. And so I would certainly say that we are actually a member, we just renewed our membership last week to the organization, so absolutely will and continue to be a best actor and agent for utilizing best practices.
You know, transportation has an opportunity to really hire apprenticeships and, you know, some of the jobs that are out there where they're, you know, working on the streets. Do you have any ideas or updates to kind of push that?
Yes, so funny you should ask that. Just had a meeting, I want to say on Tuesday, with our HR Director, and that was one of my personal goals as far as, something I would like to give back is, one of the leadership components within the agency is making sure that we do have apprenticeships, and it was actually something he was equally interested in, so it was something he had started working on. So we are interested in having apprenticeships, and he had actually begun starting the process of creating the beginning stages of an apprenticeship program. And we would be starting to take a look into jobs like laborers and seeing how we can subsequently bring people on board and having people who would also come in as perhaps maybe like an electrician apprentice or something like that, and then subsequently train them and then maybe even, not maybe, but eventually be able to bring them on board as full-time employees.
Thank you. I see Councilman Jones perked up when he heard those words. I see our chair has left, and so we're going to go ahead and move to Councilman Glover has a question.
Thank you, Vice President of the City Council. So what I want to say is, it prods me, it, I'm filled with joy when I hear of a individual that have done so much for our city, has gone and gotten knowledge in other places, state, federal level, and you decide to still come back home. And also being a former president of your community association and things of that nature, and me being a former like city employee, you know, and now sit on the council, you know, you see what we see, you feel what we feel, and you understand it the way that we do. So I'm taking it as though that you will take pride in your position as Director to make sure that those voices that are normally isn't heard, they're heard, you know. And I just want to say that, you know, the last couple, you know, snows that we had around the city, I just want to commend DOT for really making sure that overnight, it's like we seen the blacktop, it was out there doing the work. I know I drove those routes, you know, with DPW, and I was just satisfied for what I've seen, not just on the primary streets, but those small secondary streets, that to see that our neighbors were able to get out to commute to work, church, things of that nature. What I do want to say is that I asked that you make sure that, because I've gotten some emails, but I've also gotten some inbox, you know, stuff on social media in reference to like certain parts of our neighborhood where they're going out to fill potholes. And once they fill those potholes, I don't, I don't really know, from my chief of staff, I heard it's called, they need to put a stance on it. Am I saying it right, Justin?
Tamper.
I'm sorry, tamper. So tamper's where, as they put down the asphalt, to make sure that the tamper, they're using the tamper's, because what happens is that as soon as we get a rain or snow or bad weather, that pothole is there, it opens right back up. And I've gotten, actually like today, I've gotten like two emails and inboxes, because they wanted to make sure I got it, you know, that message. So it was an inbox stating that this is the stuff that we're dealing with, and they're telling me that it's happening over and over and over again. I just want to make sure that, you know, our men and women, when they're going out there to do the work, that they're using, you know, all the necessary tools that we have available to kind of ensure that these potholes aren't just coming back up overnight, because that's what we're facing. So that's basically all I just want to add to the conversation, but also one other thing, I have gotten some calls, and it may be, it may not be the right time to really talk about it, but I just want to bring it to your attention and on your radar, with, you know, Baltimore City Police Department are kind of just going back and forth with the fact that, you know, we're giving the monies to a state agency to patrol like the baseball and football gangs and things of that nature. And, you know, the conversation is more of why are we, you know, giving these monies to, you know, the state police, which they're telling me that is, is more expensive. Again, there's two sides to the stories, but it's more expensive when we're paying them out of our budget to police and make sure that our streets and things of nature, safe travels when they're leaving those venues. So if you can look into that, you know, I greatly appreciate it. And that's all I had to ask. So, you know, congratulations in advance, and I'll just move it over to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've made notes of those, I will say that, so definitely. And if you want to email me specific areas, I'm happy to talk to my team and we can sort that out.
Hello, Director, how are you?
I'm good.
Welcome home. I was really happy to hear that you were, you know, filling the job of DOT Director, and what made me feel even better about that decision was hearing current and former DOT employees also rejoicing about you coming home. And so, you know, it's, it's really exciting to see that there's a consensus that we have someone that's going to be here to fix the many issues that we see, whether it's from staffing, whether it's from, you know, standard operating procedures. And so I'm just really excited that you said yes and you came back home to help, help your city. I want to speak a little bit about parking enforcement, more specifically about, in my eyes, equity. And so we see in the numbers, and if you will look at the numbers, in the downtown corridor and Fed Hill, these areas historically will have more instances of parking violations. But in the areas that we live in, that I know you live in, and this is a great opportunity for me to ask you a question, same way you used to ask me all those questions, a couple years ago. How do we equitably make sure that we are putting our resources in the communities that aren't downtown? You know, I live in a very, and my district is very residential. And so as far as the sheer numbers, we will never be able to catch up with a Fed Hill or a downtown corridor. But if, you know, and I think we talked about this before, if 15 people are complaining about 15 different instances, but you have three cars in a certain neighborhood where five people are also complaining, but the 311 only collects one, how are we looking at that data and how are we addressing the needs of the, the communities that aren't in these downtown residential, I mean, these downtown commercial areas to make sure that we are also being equitably hurt when it comes to making sure we have traffic enforcement as well?
I think that is a superb question, and you are right, Councilman Gray. I will say that he attended a lot of my meetings where I posed a lot of these same questions that he is now asking me. And I do believe equity in parking enforcement is extremely critical. I will tell you, I live in a neighborhood where people love to dump cars and other things. People love to have vehicles with expired tags and think that they'll get away with it because we are a residential neighborhood, and we're a residential neighborhood that's in this little pocket that, I mean, no one comes through. We're a residential neighborhood where sometimes people like to park semi trucks. Like, I mean, it's all the things, and you're exactly right, there is an equity gap, right? Because we are splitting our time between enforcing these areas where we know we're going to have a huge influx and a quick pocket of money to be made, but also there are impacts in other neighborhoods. So as I previously, previously mentioned, we are looking to go to this 24-hour shift, right? So during this time, I think that's one of the most critical ways that we can expand the equitable access that we'll have in being able to do parking enforcement in neighborhoods. And one of the things that we did talk about and that I know that was extremely important as I inherited our team making these great decisions about moving forward with this 24-hour shift, is that I asked about how much time can we spend in residential neighborhoods? One of the things that we're looking at is the technology associated with using heat maps, right? Like where we are able to, one, look and see where, yes, we have these critical areas that we all know about, like I said, downtown Fed Hill, Fells Point, but also, one, we're going to use our assets as in communities, association, neighbors, our council members to hear where we're having areas that are negatively impacted by cars that are being dumped, have expired tags and things like that, and having the opportunity to intermingle one with the neighbors, but also taking a look at our heat mapping, which is us utilizing technology we actually already have access to, right? So we're also being able to work with C.A. Leach's team in her Office of Innovation, who they've also helped with us a great deal in taking a look at opportunities to see how we can use the current technology we have access to that will ultimately help us deploy into neighborhoods that typically don't have an equitable turnout to have parking enforcement. And I know how much it matters to you because it does matter to me. One of the most critical things, I will say, and I'm going to be a little tangential, is the equity that we have and do not always get to experience in most places. So that is one of the most critical things I do see and will make sure that we continue to focus on throughout all the actions that we will have within the department. But that is one of the ways that we do actively plan on making sure that we have equitable access to parking enforcement in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. That, that answer really means a lot, because we have certain areas where we've had individuals have a car dealership lot on a street where-
Oh, you mean like Gwynn's Falls?
Gwynn's Falls, California Boulevard. There's, there's a few places where they actually bring folks out to look at the car.
Yeah.
And then if you don't like it, they'll have somebody else and they make, and it becomes embarrassing for a council office when someone's telling you that there's an issue, but it's not being addressed. So thank you for that answer, and I have one more question. We know the dysfunction that is going on down in DC, and I don't know if we even have a Department of Transportation there anymore, or any other department for that matter. But we also know that the Red Line project is critical for Baltimore's transit future, and it is extremely crucial for the eighth district as it's running right through the heart of it. What role do you see the Department of Transportation playing in ensuring that it's successfully completed?
I think we will be an integral partner to our teammates at MTA and MDOT when we were partnered back when it was a viable option and it was a project that was, had actually received the funding the first go-round during the Hogan administration. That was actually my project when I worked at Baltimore City, and I was able to help the city negotiate its contribution in both in-kind and financial contribution. So, you know, in my mind, I, I just knew that this project was going to happen, and then, you know, it was kind of ripped from our hands. So I see Baltimore playing a very integral role as we have an opportunity to move forward. You know, I don't want to be pessimistic, so I'd like for us to be mindful and have realistic ideals, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we can still move forward in some capacity with the project, but I definitely foresee Baltimore being a great partner with MDOT and MTA as the project moves forward. As somebody who lives on that east-west corridor and recognizes there is a gap, you know, and also noting that, you know, there's an economic gap as well. There's a food desert, I live in a food desert, so I know all of the amazing things that could happen by having this connection with the Red Line. So personally, I support it, and as the potential leader of this agency, I will definitely make sure that it's a priority, and I know that our mayor would absolutely support this as well as we would move forward.
Thank you, and like I said, welcome home.
Thank you, happy to be home.
Let's have one quick question. First, good evening.
Good evening.
We haven't had a chance of working together in the past, but hearing everyone, hearing how excited everyone else is to work with you has me excited as well.
Thank you.
But my, my question is, as Vice Chair, you know, as the Vice President said, when I heard apprenticeships, my ears perk up. So after, with working with the previous administration, within the Biden administration, they had a, a large focus on, you know, apprenticeships and, and labor with good wages and benefits and, you know, with the idea of not only building roads, but also building bridges to opportunity and like highways of prosperity. I was just wondering, in your capacity and doing that work with the Biden administration, what, what I guess, positive things have you seen come out of that? And do you have any anticipation on using some of that, those things within Baltimore to help build opportunities for, for our neighborhoods?
I do actually have some great ideas about it, and I could actually probably scroll down maybe about 20 text messages because I'm addicted to texting, but I reached out to my friend Ross Templeton, who was actually a senior advisor in my office who handled our labor relations. So he's very well connected in the union world, and I had actually started picking his brain a little bit about how apprenticeship programs could work, because I'm extremely interested, and this was after the conver, well, this is actually before the conversation I had with our HR Director. And then I reached back out and he pointed me to a colleague of his that lives in the Baltimore region who I actually plan on kind of having a conversation with. But I think it's very critical, like, to have trade jobs. I think a lot of people don't think about the benefit of how great trade jobs are and the importance of having them. I mean, we wouldn't have 50 or more percent of the things that we have if we didn't really support the type of trade work that we need specifically in our industry at DOT. All the maintenance work that gets done, the electrical work, all of those really critical and important functions would not get done. The accolades that we received from Councilman Glover, the talking about our staff that goes out and did an impeccable job on the roadways, these are people who are tradesmen and did an amazing job, and we wouldn't even have those functions if we didn't have people who were well skilled in, in tradesman skills. So absolutely think it's a critical function, and we'll work with our team and try to figure out a way how we can continue to implement those jobs into DOT. Sure.
Thank you. Going to this 24-hour shift that you're talking about, are you going to be doing the same thing for the DOT tow yards, bringing them to a 24-hour operation?
We will have tow, towers available at, along the 24-hour shifts, yeah, to accompany for vehicles that would need to be towed on the spot, so yes.
Well, I'm more specifically asking on the customer service side. So right now, we have a set of rules for private towers and a separate set of rules for DOT, which I think is extremely unfair, that we're telling people how to operate their business, but we're not willing to practice that same thing. And so when a constituent gets their car towed, they're hoping it's done by a private vendor, because if it's a private vendor, they can go anytime, day or night, get that car back. I assume other council people have experienced the same thing, where a car gets towed before a holiday or right before, or as the weekend is starting. You know, if you leave your car too long on one of the roads, that you have to move your car by 4:00 PM, let's say, on a Friday, and then it goes to the tow yard, you come outside, you realize your car was towed, you get to the city tow yard and it's closed, you can't get your car back until Monday. And if Monday's a legal holiday, then you don't get it back till Tuesday. And so are you willing to shift the operations so that when we're also making 24-hour improvements to our customer service, where DOT- making 24 hour improvements to our customer service, where DOT uh towing is abiding by the same towing laws as everybody else has to?
I think it's definitely something that internally we can talk about and I'm happy to have the conversation um with um our leadership um within the mayor's office as well. But I know um we're gonna initially start out with the tow, I mean, not the towing, I'm sorry, um, doing the 24 hour as a piloting and then subsequently moving forward into the full-time shift. But I think because we're processing it that way, I think the towing conversation um is an influx thing that we can talk about and certainly report back.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's highly problematic for you guys to tow a car and then not give that owner the ability to get that car back. I mean, people have to get to work. Uh, and so especially if you're gonna go to nighttime towing and somebody tows your car and you see the tow truck driving off and you follow it, you should be able to get that car back. You shouldn't have to wait until the next day or something, something else. It has to, it ha- it has to work the same, the same way. Um, while we're talking about tow yards, um, as I'm sure you know, um, the tow yard is a disaster. Um, you have cars all over the place. You got cars parked under the bridges. You have cars that you don't even know where they are. Um, I had a constituent um who's victimized multiple times, both by getting their car stolen and then by the city when the city couldn't locate their car. Um, I had a constituent whose car got set on fire, car disappeared, the city didn't know where they dropped it. Um, so there's a lot of problems there. Don't have enough capacity to uh put the um put put the cars places. Um, I know that you guys have, uh, the agency has tried to um get other locations and uh royally um screwed up some of those deals for other uh additional tow yards. And so what are you doing to uh fix these uh tow yard problems?
Something that I'm still under advisement. So I'll say that and um definitely something that I'll be looking into further and I can certainly report back to you as well.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Council President Kong?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Um, one of the things that I'm deeply concerned about in terms of agency functioning is the speed at which it takes for residents to get basic traffic calming in their neighborhoods. Uh, many of our communities are crying out for stop signs, speed bumps, uh, just pretty basic things that would slow down vehicles, particularly in residential neighborhoods where we have kids, older adults and so on. And in many cases, it can take months, if not years. Uh, traffic studies, uh, really a lack of communication between the 311 app and constituents. And often what happens is that council offices get put in the middle and are begging and pleading with the Department of Transportation. Can you talk about creating some basic standard operating procedures, some policies within the agency um to level set expectations with constituents um around what we can and cannot deliver? Because I will tell you, there's a lot of frustration when commitments are made to council members for even just something as simple as a stop sign and then the date is delayed and it's delayed again and again and again and again. And uh it just seems like there's some real breakdown in procedures and in how we communicate out. So could you talk about just how you plan on tackling basic street safety, traffic calming, um, and just the processes, communication and expectations that get set around that?
Absolutely. Um, it's a great question and I do recognize um traffic calming is an extremely highly sensitive issue. Um, I'd be remiss not to say I'm also a resident first. And so um I know how it goes and, you know, as much as you know people and everything else, you also want to do things the right way. So I know the process of asking for 311 and all of those things and
And you're a resident who tracks your 311s?
I am. I have a spreadsheet. My community association has a spreadsheet. Um, Councilman Gray knows about the spreadsheet and Councilman um Vice President Middleton also knows about our community spreadsheet and we're quite proud of it. So that's a sidebar. Um, but that being said, um, I think 311 is an asset and also a challenge, right? When you are making traffic calming requests, um, admittedly, we know that we're in the hole as far as like the amount of traffic calming requests that we get, um, how soon we can get to them and the specificity of the requests that we're getting. Um, I will talk about, one, taking a con- comprehensive look at the process, right, of how we're receiving them, the timeliness of us receiving them, and then also the timeliness of our response. Also, a bigger issue is us building the capacity to a- address the existing backlog. Staffing wise, we don't have enough staff actively right now to address the backlog. I can tell you right now, our traffic division is very lean right now. And so the volume of people that we have that have the specific expertise to make decisions about traffic calming, we don't have the volume of people to make those specific determinations in versus the volume of requests that we have. Um, that being said, it's really critical in managing the expectations. That's not an excuse. It's just a statement of fact. And when I say that, um, it's about requests versus reality, right? Everybody wants a speed hump. And I know this will probably be an unpopular statement, but I'm gonna speak to fact. Everyone wants a speed hump, but everyone does not need a speed hump. So I think it's the management of expectations and taking a look at how subject matter experts are in fact the subject matter experts. We can't put a speed hump on a primary street where people have, you know, that are going 45 miles an hour, you know? We have to utilize other opportunities and metrics to work on traffic calming, right? So or an area where we want to institute traffic calming, like you said, it could be stop signs, it could be bump outs, it could be a number of other things to institute and implement um traffic calming components. And so I think part of it is, like I said, the management of how we institute what traffic calming is and how we serve and explain to our community members the best usage of traffic calming mechanisms. Um, but that also means us having the amount of time to get out and do a speed study and things like that. So yes, by volume, we're behind. Are we going to be catching up and trying to catch up? Absolutely. Another thing that I know that we are looking in to try to do is make adjustments in how we receive our specific 311 requests as it relates to traffic calming. I think it would be beneficial for us to have something more streamlined to like pull out traffic calming requests. I think oftentimes the way people are requesting them or how they end up in our 311 system, we're not perhaps getting them as the exact traffic calming request. You know what I mean? It may be something that could not be exactly perceived that it is traffic calming in and of itself. So um we are going to be taking a look at how we can better facilitate the requests and how we're addressing them. As far as um how long it will take us to move through the backlog, hopefully it'll be as expeditious as we can.
Just, um, I don't know if you know off the top, but how long is the backlog?
I had a number. And I don't know if I have it right here with me. I'm not exactly sure, but I could certainly get it back to you. I have pages and pages of notes here, so um, but I can't.
It's okay. Yeah, if you could, um
Yeah.
or someone from your team could get back to me on that. I'd love to understand it. Uh, so just as far as sort of being able to deliver on an improved system where, again, you know, to encapsulate what you just said, we are able to do a reset with constituents, set expectations, manage expectations, improve the communication along the chain of 311. When can we expect, when can the council expect that to occur?
Um, so we are, um, we've had like a preliminary conversation talking about having um meetings with city council. Um, hopefully, perhaps over your lunch sessions, we talked with C A Leach about having some lunch session meetings and talking to city council about how like the various divisions work and the functions within those divisions just to um provide some more one-on-one direct information. I think a lot of times, like with so many new members, there's indirect information that people have received and there's also established relationships, right? So we have people who have been here for a while and so you have established knowledge and knowledge of, you know, reaching out to people and things like that. So we want to provide kind of some really base level information, but also ways that we feel like will be best suited for everybody to have the same amount of information. And so we'll be working um through um C A Leach and MOGR to schedule meetings um with the council, um, hopefully in a larger group atmosphere with all of you in one room to talk about um the various divisions of DOT.
No, and I appreciate that and would be uh more than willing to work with the administrator as well as uh Moher and your staff to set up a luncheon at some point
Yes.
as well. I I want to be clear, though, what what I'm specifically looking for is not just explaining the different divisions within DOT, but explaining a more reasonable process by which we can communicate to our constituents that, hey, this is the backlog, th- this is what you can expect in terms of development of um a system rollout, this is what it looks like for uh internally DOT staff. Um, because, like I said, the system as it is currently operating uh feels deeply unsustainable and feels like we are essentially lying to the public when we say we're gonna do something. Um, so that's more what I'm
No, I I totally understand what you mean. And I did get the number. Um, 2058.
2058. So that is how many requests are sitting there?
That's in the backlog.
Got it.
Yep, of traffic calming. Um, I'm sorry, and I did want to just jump in on that. Um, I think you're absolutely right. I think it's um, this issue is broader than DOT. I've actually had the Office of Performance and Innovation and we actually have a backlog dashboard um as I'm working through um with that team on a strategy to basically disrupt the backlog and reset um services across the city enterprise and not just in DOT. What I will say is that DOT in our 311 analysis probably has the most significant um number of services that have the the biggest backlog. And so we're trying to be thoughtful and intentional about investments that we can make that would um disrupt that backlog. But to the other point about resetting expectations, um, we will come to this council with an update on this comprehensive effort that we've done to reform 311. We have actually started a process where we're updating the SLAs um for some of these services because you're right, we were not accurately communicating to the residents the time that it would take to do a service. Our SLAs were completely off and did not account for the backlog that existed.
For the record, can you say what a SLA is?
Um, the like the service level, like our ability, the time that we would actually um resolve the uh the service. So we track ourselves on whether or not the timeliness of us being able to um deliver a service. And so, for example, there's one that we've been working on with Councilmember Dorsey around parking complaints. The SLA was two hours initially, then we moved it to two days. That's not reasonable, right? We know someone's illegally parked, then they're not gonna be there 48 hours later. You need to get there as soon as you can. And so we're trying to use basic logic to update um those service delivery times as well as accounting for what's in the backlog. Um, so you have my commitment as the city administrator um to bring that work to you all. Um, we have some pretty interesting findings from our overhaul of 311. And I think what you will see is that we will now be able to reset that baseline and communicate directly um with residents about what we are reasonably able to do currently. And then you'll see that we'll put additional resources in disrupting that backlog and delivering better services.
I appreciate that. When can we expect that, Madam City Administrator?
So I've briefed your team already. Um, I'm happy to, and I think at the first council luncheon, I mentioned that I would do a briefing on 311. Um, but you and I can talk offline about the best way to do it. Um, to do it, we can, you know, have a hearing, we can, um, I can come back to a luncheon and have our OPI director um to do the briefing. But we're really, really exciting, um, excited about some of the changes that we've made there, um, but happy to discuss with you the best way that to get that in front of this body.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we can do a luncheon as long as you're paying for it.
You got it.
So um, on that same topic, one, one other thing that we had discussed was that, you know, what's more frustrating than waiting a long time to get 311s uh com- completed is when you guys go ahead and complete or do items
And don't tell them.
that the community doesn't want. So everybody has access to 311. You can have one person that goes in and puts a specific uh traffic calming request, but then nobody else wants it. And I've had numerous situations where that that has occurred. Um, and so is there a way that you can provide list to us for the larger items? Obviously, low hanging fruit like, you know, replacing a sign that, you know, is faded, that the sign was there, it's replacing that or repainting lines, those are things that need to get done anyways. But when it comes to something new, such as a new stop sign in a new location, a new speed camera, a new uh, well, traffic signals don't happen so often, but, you know, something like that, some larger items, um, or no parkings on certain streets, those items, um, is there a way that, you know, you talked about increasing um communication with the council? How can we be notified about those items prior to you doing it? Or is there a way we can look at that list and say, you know, here's some things that that certainly are not wanted?
Um, yeah, I think that's something that is a very reasonable ask. Um, it's, again, conversations we've had about communication um that is existing and also gaps in communication, right? Gaps that we have all recognized that there are silos, right, within the agency. There are some silos in divisions. And I think it's a combination of people having their heads down and trying to get their work done. There are silos in the fact that people are um maybe just absent minded in the sense of like, okay, well, it makes sense, it's gonna go there. And then maybe that's without context, very much like you said, of like not knowing um the background of like this has been an ongoing issue of like why this stop sign hasn't been here or like, you know, we've cut back these trees or whatever it might be or something like that. So I'm saying it in the essence of um absolute conversations are being had, one, about dissolving the silos, right? So and I think old habits die hard. So we all recognize that we need to reprogram ourselves to make sure that communication is paramount. Um, we're working on establishing just various channels of how we communicate and processes of how we move things through, like about who you always need to CC, who you always need to add to make sure that the people who are impacted in the agency, but then also, most importantly, the ones outside of the agency that are going to be impacted by the work, have the necessary information that they need. And so that's something that we are actively working on now. And I think hopefully in the last couple weeks, you have started to see some positive changes um with our interactions and responsiveness. Um, I think I've had communications with most of you at this point, um, phone conversations and also my team who has been, one, very helpful in kind of showing me the ropes in these new ways and the responsiveness and coordinating with MOGR and C A Leach and making sure that we are learning the ropes and how there is a preference in communicating um with you all and making sure that they have an awareness of your requests and needs and vice versa. And we'll continue to do that.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So Tyler, will you add that to the list of items for the committee uh responsive?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, another uh, another hot topic, uh, citywide issue is is the speed cameras on eighty-three. Uh, according to the data, uh, almost all the money, ninety percent plus is going to the vendor. The city has not, not done well at all with that. Um, again, that was something that was sold to the citizens as, uh, this is going to be something, there's going to be a lot of revenue, uh, and that revenue is going to help improve eighty-three. And, uh, you know, obviously we haven't seen any improvements on eighty-three. In fact, the same, uh, dead deer on the side of eighty-three southbound between exits eight and seven that I've reported for the past four days in a row is still sitting there, uh, with its head, uh, falling off. Um, and so, you know, there's a lot that needs to get done on eighty-three. Um, but the only one who seems to be making any money is this, whoever this vendor is. Uh, so what is the game plan, uh, for the eighty-three cameras to either, uh, stop making this vendor rich at the expense of taxpayers or somehow generating revenue for the city?
Um, so, great question. Um, we have seen, um, a decrease of about three thousand accidents per annum, actually. Um, actually, I would say over the course of two years. So the cameras are working, um, as far as the directionality and the citations, um, for speeding. Um, so it is getting better, um, as far as, and it's, and it's making it safer. Um, and that's the goal. Um, we're looking at opportunities of how to make adjustments as far as the existing contract for those folks who are managing, um, the camera systems. Um, I think it's a contractual issue at this point. Um, and I'm still learning the nuances of this particular contract. I think my basic understanding right now is the fact that the contract was recently renewed. Um, obviously, I know that there are nuances with city contracts. I suspect that for cause or a number of other things, we can take a deeper look at what the contract is doing. Um, but that is, um, one of the issues, um, that we can certainly explore a bit. But as, as stated, there are, um, a reduction in accidents and things like that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's great. And, um, you know, one of the things that we discussed was, uh, something that we, we were told would happen previously, which is moving the camera. And so has there been any movement on that and moving the, the southbound camera, uh, to the, just inside the city line as opposed to, uh, only taxing people who live in North Baltimore when they're going south?
So currently, um, actually I just testified on Tuesday in Annapolis. Um, Senator McCray has put forth Senate Bill five hundred. Happy to ask my dear colleague and friend Tyler to share the, um, proposed legislation with you. Um, but essentially it's a request to expand the city's speed camera service, um, by doubling the number of cameras on, um, eighty-three from two to four. And also a request of asking that the quote-unquote sunset on the I eighty-three camera service be, um, canceled, so to speak, so the service itself doesn't sunset. So there is a goal to add double the amount of cameras. So obviously utilizing the data we have where there is crash data, um, from the cameras, um, that we currently have and where we're also seeing other crashes in the area, that's where we would, um, ultimately put the other cameras, where we're seeing other, um, accidents happening at the most. So this is actively, um, circulating in the Senate right now. So hopefully we'll have support.
Yeah, I mean, that, that definitely wasn't the direction I was going at, uh, about doubling. I think that if it's, you know, based, based on the economics of how it's working now, that was, that's the opposite of, of what I was getting at.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you wanted more safety.
I think that, um, you know, one of the big challenges we face in the city that my colleagues and I know council, uh, President Cohen talks a lot about is how the city bears the burden of, uh, a lot of folks from the counties coming into the city for work or for stadiums or for entertainment and all the, or medical treatment, all the wonderful things we have in the city. So we are the hub for the state. And so, um, that is, is one of the primary reasons, I believe, that moving that southbound camera, uh, to just inside the city-county line would put that burden, um, on people coming from the county into the city as opposed to, uh, including half of the city. I just think it's inequitable that, uh, my constituents are bearing a lot of that, that brunt. Um, and the safety issue is on the northbound side by that Pepsi sign or whatever the new sign is now. Um, that is where the accidents have been happening. The southbound side, that is not a location for accidents. Um, but anyways, I'll digress on that.
No, I, I would, I don't mind answering. It is something that we have talked about and I think we potentially have the viability to move the cameras. I think this piece of, piece of legislation is in its, you know, infancy. And so it's a separate piece of legislation. And I do remember our conversation about the opportunity to move the cameras. So, um, I will talk to, um, my colleagues and team in the A T V S office and discuss with them, um, the viability of if we can move the cameras to better capture, um, violators coming in from the county.
Okay, my last question, um, does anybody else have any other questions? You do. I go ahead, Councilman Gray.
Uh, just one quick question and also just a, I guess a statement and, um, not a formal request, but, um, as far as communication, uh, salt boxes. Um, we know historically what salt boxes were used for and it was for folks to use in front of their house. And, um, there was, I, as long as I've grown up and lived in a city, I've never heard of anything different. And then about two or three years ago, there was a policy change that, or it seemed that the policy was actually being, uh, put in place that, um, one, we're taking them away, uh, from most corners and it's to be used in streets, which I have no problem with. Um, my problem is the lack of communication that was sent out to the communities. And so now every snowstorm or whenever there's a snowstorm, I don't know about any of my other colleagues, um, we get emails and calls about where's my salt box? And, um, if I'm not, you know, passing it over to, uh, our wonderful liaison in eighth district, um, I'm bearing the brunt of the frustration when I have to explain to them that it's only for certain areas. Um, I just want to know if our amazing P L team that has won awards, um, uh, can they, uh, have a better, do a better job at making sure that policy is just known across the city? Uh, so people can have, once again, we're setting expectation. And expectation is it's going to be on my corner because it's been there for thirty years and it's for us to use in front of our house and kind of making sure that it's being publicized. This is the use of the salt boxes, this is why they're no longer on almost every corner or where the corners that you're used to. Um, I think that would just go a little smoother with people understanding what, what it's about instead of what it seems like to us, which is taken and there was really no explanation. Um, and then for my question, um, and you don't really have, we can go really deep into it, um, offline, but, uh, the Baltimore link, um, I remember when they took the red line, the replacement and the answer is supposed to be the link. Um, and I just know anecdotally, uh, from folks, uh, there's a huge complaint, especially with the folks in my corridor. Um, you took the forty, which would take them from their house downtown and you took a, a quick bus and then you split it into two. And so now people are getting off the bus, uh, and they are having to now depend on two buses, uh, to be on time and actually get them to work when the one bus, which was generally late, would at least get them downtown in twenty minutes. Um, to me, that kind of speaks to the connectivity and efficiency between city streets and public transit. Um, what will you do in your role and have you already begun to talk to M T A to see how he, how we can improve our existing public transportation? Um, the bus system and, and the needs of the people and how to make sure people are getting to, to work faster, um, albeit bus lanes? Um, and to just improve our overall public transit system?
Um, that's a great question and/or comment. Um, so I have a meeting scheduled, I believe, next week with, um, our colleagues at M T A to, one, do my intro as hopefully by then the director of D O T, but currently as the intro director at D O T, to, one, talk about our existing relationship and our budding relationship, to, one, um, talk about our partnership in all things transportation and transit related in the city. And also to talk about, um, any kind of gaps and needs and services, um, within the transit needs of, you know, the districts and residents of the city. So this is, um, a notable thing for us to have a chat about. So happy for you to pass along any more specifics. And, you know, I think that goes for any and everyone else, um, on the council that if, you know, we have a needs assessment, I know my colleagues at M T A are always having open ears and open minds about how we can always assist in helping our services better, um, serve the citizens of Baltimore. Sure.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, close out by reading a statement on behalf of Councilman Dorsey. Uh, since he is watching online but not with us, he said that, please just say on my behalf that she has already said everything that I need to hear and that I wish I wasn't sick because I would have loved to be there to vote for her. So you have, uh, Councilmember Dorsey's vote, if he was here to vote.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
All right, and, um, I see there's two people signed up to testify, so I just want to give them an opportunity to do so if they're still here and would like to testify. First one is Liz Gordon. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for having us. Um, good evening and thank you to the chair and the committee for hosting this hearing. Um, I'm Liz Gordon. I am in my current role, the Assistant Deputy Administrator for Planning and Programming at the Maryland Transit Administration. Um, but I am here to testify in favor of Veronica Macbeth's confirmation, uh, as a longtime colleague across several roles. So when I first met Veronica, she was leading the city's transit bureau, as was previously mentioned. And I started there as a consultant staff member. Um, the trust and positive regard that all of her staff members had for her was immediately apparent, uh, as was her steady leadership and her advocacy for her staff, even when there were difficult external circumstances. When Veronica left the city department of transportation, she actually came to the consulting firm that I worked at. And so I was lucky enough to get to work with her in this closer capacity on project teams. Um, and also at that time, I did see her obtain her Masters of Science in Environmental Law from U M D's Carey School of Law while we both worked there together. Um, so this grounding in policy and law really served Veronica extremely well as she was selected for strategic leadership at the U S Department of Transportation. And in my current role, I interacted with her when she was there as a state recipient and a seeker of federal funds. And, um, I benefited a lot from her understanding of federal processes and federal priorities. Um, and as previously alluded to by the council president, she was an effective and steadfast advocate for Baltimore's interests in those, in that role. Over our decade or so as close colleagues and as friends, Veronica has been an important thought partner and a trusted advisor to me many times. I often go to her when I want someone to help me think things through with both policy level and systems level wisdom, as well as with a what's good for Baltimore lens as a core decision driving question. She's just really trustworthy. Additionally, she's really committed to figuring out and fixing the boring stuff, if that's what's needed. She has a good understanding that great work happens through competent and well-supported teams. And I and many others who passed through the transit bureau experienced her as just a really good boss, who you can access and talk to and who can be counted on to help you to get things done by seeking to address structural capacity and other issues that might get in the way of good work. Uh, with long experience with Veronica in a variety of different roles, I confidently express my support for her confirmation as Director of Baltimore City Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Meg Young.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, Honorable Chair, uh, and council members for having this hearing. This is a great opportunity for Baltimore City, quite frankly. Um, my name is Meg Young. I'm testifying as a resident of Baltimore City. Um, but I will say my current employment is as a deputy director at the Maryland Department of Transportation. I'm a former Baltimore City D O T employee in, in the transit bureau. Uh, so we, we go, we go places after working in the transit bureau, um, as well as the, the Federal Transit Administration. Um, so I submitted these remarks, uh, for the record, but I'll also read them. Um, over the six years I've known Veronica, I've known her to be principled, direct and compelling as an agent for, agent for change in the transportation industry. Her impact goes beyond individual projects to the teams she leads and those watching. She's known nationally for delivering well-executed transportation projects and advocating for policies that advance transportation equity. Her leadership and knowledge can help us reform policies and implement processes to improve our transportation system in Baltimore City. Throughout the years of crossing paths on various projects, I heard from Veronica's direct reports, we did not actually serve at the same time in the transit bureau, uh, but as her skill, as skills as a manager and leader. Even when faced with tough projects and decisions, being tasked knocking door to door, her employees always lauded her for maintaining positive morale and teamwork, something that's desperately needed in our Department of Transportation. I've lost my place. Uh, I experienced this firsthand when I worked alongside Veronica at the Federal Transit Administration, where she was the agency's senior advisor and I was a community planner. Even as a senior advisor for the agency, she remained accessible to help my office guide unprecedented investment into transit, transit-oriented development and more livable communities. Her skill at weighing priorities and planning set her apart in our leadership and led to her further advancement within U S D O T. When conveying the intricacies of transportation projects to decision-makers and the general public, I've seen Veronica communicate complex projects with a nuance that captures the far-reaching impacts that transportation has on the quality of life. Vice President Middleton, I think this is what you said, you thought she was a liaison herself because of her willingness to talk to people and explain everything about a project. Not everyone and not every leader does that. And in addition to her professional expertise, I know Veronica to be an active community member of Baltimore. As she stated, she's a homeowner and former community association president. Thank you for that service as well. And is raising her two kids here. I know she's devoted to working for Baltimore's Renaissance and is the leader we need for Baltimore City D O T to improve equity of access, transportation workforce development, roadway safety, and to use transportation investments as a catalyst for our ci- city's economic developments. I fully support her confirmation as the Baltimore City Department of Transportation Director. Thank you.
Anybody else wish, wishes to testify? Okay, did you want to testify? All right, um, I will enter.
No, I didn't know if I was supposed to stand.
Did you have anything closing, any closing remarks?
I just assumed I was supposed to stand back here, am I not?
It's up to you.
It's my first time, so.
You're good. Um, I will entertain a motion on E A twenty-five dash zero zero one, Veronica Macbeth for the Director of the Department of Transportation. All right, uh, moved by, uh, Middleton.
Second.
Seconded by Gray.
Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Vice Chair Glover.
Yes.
Vice Chair Glover votes aye. Vice President Middleton. Vice President Middleton votes aye. Mr. Gray.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Gray votes aye. Mr. Dorsey is absent. Mr. Chair, four votes and the affirmative, no negatives. This action can go through second read on Monday night.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. We are now adjourned.